Uh. This meeting is now called to order. This is City Council Housing Subcommittee. And we are conducting this meeting, virtual meeting. So that means that every time there is a yes or no vote, we have to go directly to our council, which is Vice Mayor Nunes and myself. So, so in on the public comments, so interested public members may submit written comments via the city website. Comment entries will only be available during the meeting. Commentators may state their name and address for this record and shall limit their remarks to three or less, which depending on how many callers we have. And also city staff will monitor and read aloud the comments during the public meeting for approval of the chair. And I am City Council Member, Karen Montana, I'm the Chair of this committee. So now we're going to do call to order. So Bob Juniors, are you here?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm here. So now we have done the roll call. Okay. And now item number two, we're going to do a pledge of allegiance. Bob, would you like to have the honor of reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, please.
Okay, everyone stand up.
And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob, that was very well said.
Thank you.
All right. So now going back to the agenda, and I don't see it on the screen.
Do I move approval of the agenda?
And I second that. All in favor say aye, so that means with the roll call, Bob.
That's right.
And then myself.
Aye.
Aye. So it has passed unanimously. Thank you for putting the agenda. I think that's Robert just doing it. Okay, approval of minutes for June 4, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And I second that, so Bob has moved, and then I have second that. Okay, that has passed unanimously. Now it is time for item number five, which is the public forum. Okay. Business items, I'm having a hard time. I can't see the bottom, can you move? Can you move the screen a little bit up? The agenda so I could see the bottom part? Business items? Is it, okay there, thank you. All right, business items. I'm six. Receive progress report on City of Milpitas homelessness response and affordable housing initiatives. And I want to thank the public that is online. And we've done a lot of great things in Milpitas and hopefully you will see that we have such a great city and staff that is working really hard. Thank you. So go ahead. City. On six A.
Okay. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you, perfect.
All right, great. So our housing team staff were very pleased to present to you the progress report on the city's initiative and efforts over the last couple of years on homelessness and affordable housing initiatives. We'll be briefly going over the program, policies, and budget actions that the City of Milpitas has taken since 2017. And first, I'll just talk about the background, about our homeless population and the point in time homeless census in Santa Clara County. And then we'll summarize the city's progress, council actions, and staff implementation. This portion is going to be organized into three categories: protection, production, and preservation. These categories, hello?
Could you make it bigger, please?
Oh.
That'll be Robert. Robert. Make the screen bigger so.
Oh yeah, give me one second, I thought I had it in slideshow, it's saying it. It's not coming up on slideshow?
No.
No.
One second. That's odd, it's never happened before. One second.
Can we put it up?
One second.
There you go.
That's good, thank you.
Good. Much better.
Okay. Okay, so I'll pick up where I left off.
Continue.
Yes. Yeah, so for the progress report, we'll summarize the actions and activities and staff implementation. And this section is going to be organized into three categories: protection, production, and preservation. These categories have been known as three Ps. They've been widely adopted by the region, and they reflect the core pillars of the region's approach to solving the housing crisis. And then after that, we'll look at the next step and briefly describe the initiatives and opportunities that are building upon the city's efforts. Next slide. Okay. So every two years during January, communities across the country conduct very comprehensive counts of the local homeless population. This is in order to measure their prevalence of homelessness in the region. And what you see there is a map of the 2019 Santa Clara County Point in Time Homeless Census. And this count represents all sheltered and unsheltered persons experiencing homelessness. And you'll see a number next to the count. That is the number of the point in time count per 1,000 residents. So it's relative to the population. And Montessorino, you don't see anything because there's zero. But if you look at Los Altos Hills to the left, relative to the population, they have .2 per 1,000 resident. And Milpitas in the upper right is 1.6. And the lower right, you see Gilroy, so they're very high, tight, they have 12 per 1,000 resident. And as you can see, the 2019 count, sorry?
No, I'm surprised that Palo Alto has more than Milpitas, you know? Since their income, their capital, per capita is much higher than us, than ours, city. So I'm really surprised. Anyhow, moving on, sorry, I didn't interject that.
Yeah, so just wanted to point that out, there's also that other number you see that's relative to the population.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next slide. So the Point in Time Count is conducted using the federal government HUD definition of homelessness. It is consisted of street count and shelter count. The street count is a count of unsheltered homeless individuals and families that are living outdoors on the streets, at bus stations, train stations, in parks, or tents, in vehicles, or abandoned properties. The shelter count is a count of individuals and families that are temporarily living in shelters, including emergency shelters and transitional housing. And the table there shows you the point in time count in Milpitas, you know, since 2013. And you can see how it's been varying every two years. And that basically kind of let us know that it is really important to know the homeless census has limitations because it is a count of the street homeless and homeless at temporary shelters at a specific point in time. It doesn't account for persons who live in work out of condition, in inadequate housing, or in unstable housing. And that is different from another definition that we've been hearing about in our community, and that's the McKinney-Vento definition. At the time of this report, before we published it last week, there were 397 students that qualify as homeless under the federal McKinney-Vento Act. This act has a broader definition of homelessness. They define homeless children and youth as individuals who lack a fixed, regular, and at inadequate, sorry, inadequate nighttime residence. So that includes children and youth who are house sharing with other families, living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, or irregular inadequate residences. So the Point in Time Count does not include all of the students under the McKinney-Vento program at the school district because of this difference in the definition. Next slide. And this is the outline for our progress report. So our team is going to be presented, and this list really represents teamwork by the housing team over the last several years. Now I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, our housing planner.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Good afternoon, Housing Subcommittee and everyone participating in today's meeting. So I'll be reviewing some of the action that the city has taken to provide protection to our residents as it pertains to housing and emergency needs. The next slide will cover the Milpitas Rent Relief Program. On October 15, 2019, the City Council authorized the creation of a pilot rent relief program, an idea that emerged out of this subcommittee last August. The city partnered with the Silicon Valley Independent Living Center to facilitate service to our community members and also worked closely with the school district's McKinney-Vento program, Project Sentinel, Nextdoor Solutions to Domestic Violence, and the Milpitas Senior Center for Program Referrals and Wraparound Services. The initial allocation for the pilot program was $100,000, which has since grown to $600,000 allocated from various funding sources over the past year. And of that $600,000, the city has expended $250,000 to assist approximately 50 families, or over 50 families, and about 185 Milpitas residents total. The city also, on October 15, 2019, the Milpitas City Council passed the Rent Review and Just Cause Eviction Urgency Ordinances. These ordinances provided protections to tenants by creating a safe space for residents to review rent increases with landlords, prohibiting landlord retaliation, strengthening notification requirements of rent increases, and prohibiting source of income discrimination. The Just Cause Eviction Moratorium lasted through December 31 of 2019, and then the next day on January 1, 2020, AB 1482 took effect. And this slide outlines our CDBG program allocations this year. Some highlights of this year's funding allocations that relates to resident protections are the Milpitas Food Pantry with $54,656 allocated to assist over 3,000 residents, $131,290 for Project Sentinel to provide fair housing services, workshops, and events that will serve over 1,000 Milpitas residents, and $50,000 to Project Sentinel for their It Takes a Village Rent Negotiation Program. And I believe Robert will be continuing on our progress on protection for Milpitas residents.
Thank you, Sarah. And good afternoon again, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Montana. As a part of our progress on protecting tenants, the city's Building Safety and Housing Team, which includes code enforcement, have been working more collaboratively to identify residents in need of additional resources. Inspectors and code enforcement officers assess homes in disrepair as well as homes with substandard housing and safety and habitability issues. And in case there are no alternative housing resources available, building inspection and code enforcement teams will refer residents to the city's housing team, who will attempt to connect these residents with resources and other community-based organizations. In 2017, the Milpitas Police Department received grant funding designated towards establishing a homeless outreach team. The funding also includes essential supplies such as nourishment kits, basic hygiene supplies, and helps link unhoused residents with services. From an education standpoint, staff has been very active in providing resources to the community by creating a resources webpage, a COVID-19-specific resource webpage, and having conducted over 24 workshops on a wide variety of housing-related programs, such as fair housing and home sharing, in partnership with these local nonprofits. Next slide, please. This slide will highlight the development at 355 Single Court as a key part of the city's progress on housing production and its commitment to housing chronically homeless individuals. The development will offer 101 affordable units, 40 of which are for permanent supportive housing. 31 units will be deed restricted as extremely low income. 30 units will be deed restricted as low income. The city has financially committed to the following to the Single Court project: $150,000 in a predevelopment loan, $299,097 as a CDBG loan to assist with site acquisition, and $6.5 million to secure construction financing. Construction is anticipated to begin in late 2020, and tenant placement is estimated to occur in mid-2022. Next slide, please. Continuing on with production, in June 2018, the City Council adopted Inclusionary Housing Ordinance 297, which requires residential developments of ten or more units to build 15% of these units as affordable. To date, the city has over 100 inclusionary affordable units upcoming. The ordinance also requires some types of commercial projects to pay impact fees to help build or preserve affordable housing. In March 2019, the City Council adopted Resolution 8852, which approved the Affordable Housing Fee Schedule for residential in-lu fee and commercial impact fee. The fees vary by commercial project type, but the range of the fee is $3 to $6 per square foot. Next slide, please. And finally, some progress on the city's preservation efforts. The City Council has been very active in preserving the affordability of the Sunny Hills Apartments. In 2017, the City Council allocated $250,000 per year for five years to extend the tenant-based rental assistance contract and to preserve the affordability of 149 households at Sunny Hills. In June 2020, the City Council allocated $200,000 in CDBG funds to rebuilding Together Silicon Valley for a roof replacement capital project at Sunny Hills. The project will provide new roofs to help preserve and maintain the residential buildings that are almost exclusively occupied by low and moderate income residents. And over the past three years, the City Council has allocated $185,400 to the Life Moves Homeless Shelter for Critical Repairs. These shelters offer temporary nightly homeless shelter support to Milpitas residents.
Can I ask a quick question here?
Yes, ma'am.
Robert, so on this, the roofing, $200,000, has that been, has that been done already, or is that still in progress for the Sunny Hills Apartments?
It is in progress. The capital projects under CDBG technically can take up to two years in order to complete the project, but the project is ongoing.
Okay, that's answered my question, thank you.
Yeah, my understanding is that, I think during the, probably last week or the week before, they were starting to get the bits for the project.
Okay.
Yeah, so it is continuing.
Yeah, it takes a while, the phases, different phases, so yeah. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one question, Robert?
You sure can.
Okay. Thank you. If you could just go back, it was on Single Court. There. Is it my understanding that that's been put on hold? Somebody told me that, I'm just trying to see if there's.
So it's not, not true. What happened was the RCD, Resource for Community Development, the developer, they, they applied for some funding, the funding, they are second in line on the waitlist for the funding. So the funding was anticipated to be approved in September for an estimated close of November. At the moment, they believe they will be approved for the funding in a couple of weeks, and the project has been pushed back, essentially between four and eight weeks at the moment is the estimate that they've. But that is, our next update will be coming on October 5 from the developer, but that was the latest update as of the last meeting, which I believe was September 16.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Next. Okay. Who has that?
Yeah, so yes, I'll do this portion. So we're going to look at the efforts that are in the works, initiatives, and the opportunities. And these will help identify the remaining service gaps and ways to further prevent and reduce homelessness in Milpitas. For the first bullet you see there, homeless outreach and case management services, you're going to hear more about it under item B in detail. But a little bit of background, in fiscal year 2019, the council approved a $75,000 budget for a nonprofit agency homeless case manager dedicated to Milpitas. And at that time, we had just one new staff member and still had vacancies. So we have very limited staffing capacity. But we were able to explore with a nonprofit like MOOFS, and they identified the possibility to support residential services coordinators at a shelter, but didn't find a feasible solution for a dedicated Milpitas case manager. And then further research was delayed because of the staffing vacancy due to the labor market. And also there were urgent priorities of rent review, rent relief, and COVID-19 activities and response, and CDBG. But now we have a full housing team on board, and also in response to the Housing Subcommittee, we've conducted research on homeless outreach and case management services. And you're going to hear about this in more detail under item B. And then the next bullet on Project Home Key, that's on today's agenda also under item C, so you'll hear more details later as well. And then the Community Plan to End Homelessness and the Unhoused Task Force, we have that on the next two slides. We can move to the next slide?
Thank you.
In 2014, Destination Home, in partnership with the Santa Clara County Continuum of Care, developed a five-year county-wide roadmap to end homelessness. Recently, the county revamped the plan and updated it. Our city housing team contributed in January and February when we met with the county and also had communication further. And we met with Destination Home together as well to provide input into the plan, and we noted Milpitas' contribution to ending homelessness. The city's approach so far that you saw in the progress report, as well as the planned next steps that you'll hear in the next two items, they're aligned with the three strategies under the updated plan that you see on the screen there. This updated plan will, sorry, it was endorsed by the County Board of Supervisors on August 25, and will be presented to an upcoming City Council meeting in October for your endorsement. Next slide. To implement that community plan to end homelessness, Santa Clara County has convened a group of 30 stakeholders to identify and contribute ideas. And it's a very broad group, it includes elected officials from cities, and we're fortunate to have Vice Mayor Nunes and Councilmember Dominguez. We have two members on this task force. The focus of the task force is guided by the Community Plan Strategies III. The task force is going to be working together to develop a package of immediate strategies and solutions for the unhoused that can be implemented as soon as possible. The first meeting took place on September 9. The second through fourth meetings will be focused on potential projects by regions and cities. Our understanding is that the second meeting on September 24th is going to be focused on North County, including Milpitas. And then the final meeting scheduled for October 8 will include the final approval of the task force recommendation. So that concludes staff presentation.
Thank you. So I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask Vice Mayor if he had any additional comments on this, since he's on the task force.
And thank you very much. Yes, thank you very much. I think that going forward, we're going to have opportunities now to add to the plans that the county is going to look at.
I think you froze. Yeah, let's just, for for the sake of time.
Facilities, right. And as I look at it, I think that it's a very short period of time, September 9, which has already passed us, but through October 8, and then we're going to take that plan, not only through the City Council, but then pass it on through to the Board of Supervisors. And I think that the council member made a real good point of looking at on that first sort of distribution of where the house lists are really identified as being. There are many throughout this county in many different cities. So there's going to be input from every single city as to what kinds and types of programs, facilities there should be. And I do think we're lucky to have two representatives. I'm happy to be one of them. But we will be looking for community input. And right today is really part of that process, so I think we're lucky for that. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Thank you for those comments. Okay, moving on. That is, I guess there's the next one?
No, that concludes our presentation. So if you want, Robert can check for public comments on this item.
That would be great. We can, we can move on with public comment. And how many do we have people that want to say something, Robert?
At this time, we have two public comments. One of the comments, the earlier of the two comments, is actually for the next agenda item, so I think I will reserve that for the next agenda item. The second one is more general, so I can read that now.
Okay, that's great.
The Milpitas City Council and staff and/or the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors should consider, fund, and implement the following: Provide hot lunches to Milpitas adult unhoused and unhoused children and their underprivileged families, elderly, and sick residents. families, elderly, and sick residents. Partner with loaves and fishes, as Milpitas Food Pantry does not serve hot meals. Provide mobile shower slash laundry and healthcare services to the above population. Provide trash bins and regular pickup service. Up unhoused encampments. Provide temporary and later permanent housing, including comprehensive services. Thank you very much, Laredo and Laredo QD's Brigade, Silicon Valley.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those comments. Yeah, I do agree. I feel we need to have some kind of services. Port of parties, as you mentioned, and, you know, and I'm hoping that the city council, the task force can look more into that. So, okay, the next item?
And, Madam Chair?
Yes, please?
Yeah, so I would just wonder, are we going to circle back to these programs later on in the agenda? You know, Sharon? Or Robert?
You mean under E? We can do that.
So I'm just, okay, under E is fine. Thank you very much.
I think that's a good, under E.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, so our housing manager, Adam Marcus, is going to present this next item.
All right, thanks Sharon, and good afternoon, Chair Montano and Vice Mayor Nunez and everyone. Can everyone hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, Marcus.
Okay. All right. Well, we're going to continue on with our presentation here on homelessness. And, you know, in the previous item, you heard a little bit of a progress report on some of the initiatives that the city has already undertaken. You also got a bit of a sneak peek on the county's updated community plan to end homelessness and its three strategies. And as Sharon mentioned, the third of those strategies really does relate to this item that we're going to talk about now, which is outreach. But this item that we're going to talk about for the next few minutes really does fit under that item, and it's good, good timing that we're able to discuss both of them together. So if you go to the next slide, a little quick overview of what we'll be talking about. Sorry, we should be on slide two. Right, so for this presentation, I'll be joined by my colleague Catherine Kaminsky, Acting Deputy Director with the County's Office of Supporting Housing. Thank you, Catherine, for joining us. And I'll quickly provide some background. Catherine will discuss the county's coordinated assessment and supportive housing system. And of course, she'll be available for answers because she's, you know, one of the experts in the county on this. So we'll definitely be looking to her for those answers to tough questions in case we need it. And then I'll be reviewing some of the trade-offs between three different approaches to outreach assessment and case management. Next slide. Trouble with my screen. Okay. So as we had mentioned, you know, in the memo, in 2019, the city council set aside $75,000 for the city to contract with a nonprofit agency to do case management dedicated to the city of Milpitas to really enhance the level of outreach and services that were available. But as Sharon mentioned, it's taken a bit of time to get back to that. In June, the Housing Subcommittee asked us for a status update, and here we are today, providing that update after having done some research and had lots of discussions with the county as well as nonprofit service providers. Next slide. My screen is, it's a little bit cut off, so I'm just. So I wanted to give a quick update of, you know, we talked about the point in time count, and we know that in 2019, there were roughly 125 unhoused residents in Milpitas. This slide represents data that we received from the county. And it's a little different, but it's about 128 households that have active assessments within the county's system. And of those, if you'll notice that the gray section of the pie chart, the 79 households, is the largest chunk, and that's the number of residents in Milpitas that are likely to need permanent supportive housing. The second largest chunk of that pie is the orange part, and that's people who could be eligible for rapid rehousing, which is a more temporary assistance before they can sort of get back on their feet and be employed and get sort of back into the market. And Catherine will elaborate a little bit on those programs. And then, of course, a smaller portion of the population represents people that need just minimal assistance. Maybe, you know, it might be, for example, people who need a few months of rent. And then the other thing I wanted to point out was that while there are 128 people that are, have active assessments, there are only 27 that are enrolled in the county's programs. So I'll say that again, out of 128, only 27 are enrolled in the program. I think what that tells us is that we need to know a little bit more about why that is, and we're hopeful that additional outreach assessment, reassessment, and possibly case management can help to grow that number from 27 to something much closer to 128.
Okay, so Adam, can you remind me what RRH or PSH is again?
Absolutely, Councilmember. Actually, Catherine's going to discuss it in detail, and she'll do a much better job at it than I will. But the RRH means rapid rehousing. And PSH is permanent supportive housing. And I'm sorry for not explaining that earlier. Well, in just another slide or two, she'll go into depth on that.
Yeah, and just to let you know, this is where there has always been some type of misnomers, because, you know, the definitions of what is a homeless and what is not a homeless. And I'm glad that Sharon was able to describe exactly what the definition was, shelter versus not, someone that is not sheltered. Because there are a lot of folks that live with relatives or their parents because they, you know, they can't afford to pay rent somewhere. So they, so they have a mutual agreement, but they're not really considered homeless. They're just, you know, it's just that, yeah, this is where the confusion comes in. But I'm glad that you're able to hone in and target in on those, that there truly are 27 that are unhoused. They don't have a roof over their head, and that's what, or they're living in their car. So those, and then we, and you're right, we need to, there's probably more out there, but we, I think, once we hire the outreach person, we will be able to find more that truly need those services. So thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and Catherine can speak to that as well. I think each of these programs is designed for certain needs. And of course, there are definitely people who don't quite fit in some of these buckets. And so I think you're right, it's important to understand the full picture of homelessness. Absolutely. Next, next slide. With this, I'm going to pass, pass the baton over to Catherine to do a few slides. Catherine?
Thank you, Adam. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Adam, and thank you, councilmembers and staff for inviting me here today to share. So, you know, we often get asked a question, you know, what do you mean by supportive housing? You know, I work for the Office of Supportive Housing, as Adam mentioned. And when we talk about supportive housing, supportive housing, we're talking about the entire system. And this is, you know, a continuum of services for our homeless residents in our county. So the diagram on the, on the screen right now shows sort of that continuum of services. And starting in the lower left-hand corner, you know, we have homelessness prevention services across, across our county that are targeted towards people who are at risk of losing their housing and becoming homeless. And this intervention is intended to prevent people from becoming homeless and provide financial assistance, rental assistance, and the supports needed for people to remain in their current housing. Then we have our outreach services across the county. Outreach serves a couple of purposes, you know. Our outreach teams engage with people who are living outside. They connect people with resources and locate people who are referred to one of our housing programs. And they serve as one of our primary access points to our coordinated assessment system. So that coordinated assessment system, this is a front door to accessing housing resources in our community. We, I'm going to talk a little bit more in more detail on the next slide about how that coordinated assessment system works. But it is the standardized assessment that is provided to all, is conducted with all people experiencing homelessness, and intended to match people with the right kind of resource that will meet their needs. Emergency.
And those are those wraparound services that we are talking about, right?
Yeah, so that's all of our housing programs. And I'll talk a little bit about each of those types of housing programs, so that you have a little bit more information about what that, what that means. The other primary access point is our emergency shelters. And most people are familiar with emergency shelter services. These, you know, provide a safe place to sleep, meal, hygiene services, perhaps some connection to other resources as well. And those are also a primary access point to our coordinated assessment system. So most of, most of the, our, our most common access points to this coordinated assessment system are through our outreach providers, our shelter providers, and our drop-in centers. So once folks are assessed and referred to a program, you know, those programs that they would be referred to fall in three different types. And those are seen on the right side of your screen, permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, and rapid rehousing. Permanent supportive housing is targeted to, for individuals who are experiencing chronic homelessness. They have had, they've been homeless for a long period of time, or have experienced multiple episodes of homelessness. And the intervention includes a long-term subsidy and intensive case management to meet the needs of that individual, including connecting folks with mental health services, healthcare services, sort of all of those wraparound services, as you mentioned. The second type of intervention is transitional housing. And this is usually targeted toward transition-age youth, survivors of domestic violence, perhaps people in recovery from substance use. And it's a shorter-term program, typically up to 24 months, and provides that housing and services, and often sort of life skills and other services that people need to exit into more permanent solution. The final one is rapid rehousing, and this includes, again, sort of a short to medium-term financial assistance and support services. So this is rental subsidy for six to 24 months, and also includes case management services to help people increase their income, connect them with maybe work training programs, address mental health needs, all those sort of wraparound services that, that they might need, but for a time-limited period. Next slide. So how that coordinated assessment system works, as I mentioned, it's a front door to accessing those different types of housing interventions. And what outreach workers, shelter providers, and other access points do is they conduct a standard assessment, which is basically a survey where people self-identify their experiences. And the goal of that assessment is to determine what type of resource that individual or household may need, as well as to determine sort of a vulnerability level. So we are trying to connect them with the right time of resource, with the right type of resource. We're also trying to prioritize people based on their need, meaning we want to, we, as a system, are serving the highest need individuals first. So after an assessment is given to an individual, they're placed on what's called a community queue, which is basically a list of people who need housing resources that changes every day based on, we have new assessed, people being assessed every day. And when a slot opens up in permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing, or in transitional housing, we take the next individual that is sort of most vulnerable, but also matched to that type of resource, and they're referred to that, that program. And then staff, either from the program or from our client engagement team, which I'll talk a little bit about, will contact them, confirm their eligibility, and hopefully enroll them in the program where they will receive services. So the key here is to make sure that, you know, all of these housing resources are connected to this, this community queue, this coordinated assessment system. So if people aren't being reached by outreach or shelter, or one of our other sort of access points, they won't be referred to our housing programs. So we try to make sure that our access points are as broad as possible. Next slide. The last thing I'm going to talk about is one other aspect of our outreach is our client engagement team here at the Office of Supportive Housing. And this is, after a client is referred to a supportive housing program, they will find, locate the client, confirm their eligibility. You know, many of our programs are federally funded or have very specific requirements by the funding source. So this is really a group of experts that are, they're experts in locating, they're experts in confirming that the client is eligible, that we are, you know, in compliance with the regulations that govern the program that they're getting referred to. And then they do a warm handoff to the case manager. So this team really has decreased the amount of time that people are, that our system is taking to find people, locate them, and connect in the housing. They've really cut down on that time. So that, this team, in combination with other outreach teams that are doing that initial engagement, sort of cover the scope of outreach in our community.
Thanks so much, Catherine. So, you know, I think it's important to pause and distinguish, well, what's the difference between outreach and case management? And while that may differ from city to city, sometimes they overlap. You know, really, the way that we're thinking about it is that outreach is part of case management. It's the first part, it's the early part. And in outreach, it's, it's sort of the first, first connection, and again, locating clients where they are, going to where they are several times, building trust and rapport over multiple visits, distributing, distributing essential supplies, you know, noting whether there's, you know, health concerns for those clients, asking them if, you know, if they're ready or interested to do a standardized assessment, as Catherine described, or to update one, if they've already done one, if it's been a while. And of course, helping them to enroll in the program. So really, that, you know, what this is talking about, this Milpitas service provider would be getting everyone to a point where they're ready to sort of be in the community queue that Catherine described, have a score, be assessed, so that when housing becomes available, they're, you know, sort of ready, so to speak, to be placed by, by the client engagement team at the county. Case management can go a little bit further beyond just assessing. You know, it can be regular communication and meetings, evaluating different options, helping a client to make a plan for their future, advocating on the client's behalf, connecting and coordinating to services, maybe even giving them a ride to and boarding appointments, health appointments, monitoring their progress on their plan. And generally, a case manager, which is more intensive work, is usually about 20 to 25 clients at a time. Next slide. Sharon already described this, I won't really go into detail. Since 2017, our Police Department of Milpitas has been doing homelessness outreach. Since 2017, our police department in Milpitas has been doing homelessness outreach. And they've been providing supplies and referrals. But, you know, what they're not doing is they're not doing the ISBDA assessments as Catherine described. And so there is, you know, there is a need to do more and to build upon the good work that the police department has been doing thus far. Next slide. We did reach out to some of the other cities in our area. As you recall, there was a study that was done early this year, like a staffing study that looked more generally at how cities are approaching homelessness in terms of who they have on staff. And we also went ahead and and reached out to cities in Santa Clara County to find out, well, you know, who's doing homeless street outreach and are they doing it with an in-house case manager who's on staff for the city? Or are they doing it with with are they outsourcing it to a number of community nonprofits that do this kind of work in the South Bay?
Do you have a so Adam, do you have a budget? Do you have a column there that shows their budget on what they're spending?
I I don't have it for everyone. We do have information for the ones that are working with the county. That's something that would be easy to get. But for the ones that have direct contracts, we'd have to follow back up with them. For example, Sunnyvale, I don't I don't have that one. But it's something that we could get, I think. We did look at this a little bit and the revenue agreements that let me back up a sec. The cities that are partnering with the county, let me just say this. We didn't find anyone in the South Bay who does their own street outreach with with in-house staff. We did find, and what you see on this slide, we did find at least six organizations, sorry, cities that that either have an arrangement with the county or they have a direct contract with a community based organization. Now, for the ones that work with the county, those contracts, council member range from, I believe, Morgan Hill was about $70,000 or $80,000 per year, which was on the lower side. And then at one point in time, the city of San Jose had a, I think about a million dollar contract with or agreement with the with the county. At this time, they know currently, but in the past, I think it was 2018 or 2019. So it can range between $70,000 to $1 million, depending on the size of the city. And that's that those are the ones for the county agreements. I would assume that the Sunnyvale contract is probably somewhere in the middle there.
Yeah, that would that would be good to have for us, the housing subcommittee to have that information in the future. And also what programs they are doing, so we can do a comparative, you know, just to compare what other cities are doing. So budget and and what programs they are doing for the unhoused.
Absolutely. And if I'm, yeah, and if I may, could we if we could have that same information for those that have direct contract with CBOs? And and then like services, so we can see what what the costs are. And are there any that are regionalized, so that there's more than one city involved?
Yeah, that's a great question, Vice Mayor. The definitely the the county agreements, and we'll get to that in a minute, are 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 regionalized. And that's one of the frankly, that's one of the advantages to working direct through the county with their their heat team, the which is staffed by a boat services. There are some efficiencies, economies of scale, both for the cities and for the nonprofits, so they don't have, you know, 10 different contracts. They just have one contract.
Duplication, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Right.
There. And direct contracts. So just to kind of keep us focused on this item is that I think there's a range of things that cities can do. And so for for this item, we really tried to keep it focused on street outreach and assessment and and to some extent case management. But there are definitely other things that, you know, cities are doing such as hygiene services and mobile laundry and, you know. So there's there's a wide range of things, but for the rest of this item, we'll just kind of be focused on that first step, which is getting people assessed so that they're kind of in the queue and ready to go.
So I would have just one more question, and and that is where the case managers and those persons providing the services, where they would be housed themselves? In Milpitas, would they be, would we be providing space within the city of Milpitas? So they'd be closer to those that they're providing the services for? Or would they be over in in downtown San Jose or wherever the CBO is based?
It's a great question. So the county's team works throughout the county. They do not work in San Jose because San Jose has its own, it's a large enough city where it has its own contracts. So the county's team really focuses on the rest of the county and they, you know, they divide their time in different sections of the county. And again, Catherine can jump in if if she has specifics, but from what I understand, you know, they spend one day in the North County and the next day in the South, just kind of keep going back and forth. So they are they are going to clients in the field, they're not setting up an office and asking people to come to them. Which is, I think, is the that's the difference between what we're talking about today, which is going, you know, it's field outreach versus having people go to shelters and be assessed. Which, you know, has its own, you know, some people that won't do that. So I think that's where it's it's important to have that. Now, in terms of office space, we had heard from the Bill Wilson Center said, you know, we focus on youth, you know, we're not probably looking to do generalized outreach in Milpitas, but I'll tell you, having a place to to have meetings in Milpitas would really help. So I think, you know, even though there would be street outreach, you know, occasionally people will want to come inside and fill out paperwork and and it could be handy to to have that space if it exists here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next slide. Okay, so we'll we'll wrap this section up really, you know, it kind of came down to three different options. The first two being partnerships with the county and then the sec, the third one being a direct contract with a service provider. And because of, you know, because of our sort of assumed budget of $75,000, I think there's just there's just trade offs, there's no real kind of perfect solution. Each one of them provides different things and provides different benefits. So let me, you know, this is sort of an overview, but we'll go go one by one. And why don't we just go ahead to the next slide and we'll just start on 1A. So 1A is again, would be a partnership with Santa Clara County's Office of Supportive Housing. And and what this would be would be a $75,000 contract for homeless street outreach and assessment only. So it would not include intensive case management. I think from what I understand, it might include some light case management, but because they're covering a larger kind of, you know, a larger geography and their focus is, you know, on reaching people with mental health barriers. You know, they have a very specialized team that's unique. And so there's some benefits there, but they they're not going to be able to probably spend as much time as perhaps a dedicated team, a full time team. So again, some of the pros to 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 working with the county on outreach and assessment would be, again, more efficiency in terms of fewer contracts for everyone to manage. You know, was that we could kind of be incremental in adding service versus having to pay, say, $200,000 for a dedicated team. So this allows for sort of a smaller investment upfront to sort of get things started. You know, the county has lots of resources. And I think, you know, working with them would would sort of just improve our our general connection to an understanding of their of their system. Especially because their team focuses and has clinicians on staff that are going out in the field that that are specialists in helping people who have mental health barriers. And really, from what we've been told, you know, the real aim is to first connect people to what they need and then work on the assessment. And so, you know, in the stories that they've they've provided to us, you know, they've really been able to reach people that have resisted assessment or or enrollment in housing programs in the past. And they've been around for about a year and they've been pretty much meeting their stated goals in terms of how many people they've reached and enrolled. The the downside or the the cons of working on this type of a contract is that, again, it wouldn't include intensive case management. And response times are estimated to be about a day or two. Depending on where they are in that in the county and 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 so, you know, and and then finally, the city wouldn't be able to choose a provider. It's it's already been been established through the county. That would be option 1A.
Adam?
Pause there, yeah.
Yeah, if I can just ask a quick question in the second bullet. So I understand we currently have, and I just trying to find out where these positions fit in in all of these plans. We currently have one part time social worker in our senior center. And we're still recruiting for a social, a full time social worker. Are these two positions going to be working as part of a team with with this process, this assessment outreach and assessment process? Or are they separate?
Well, you know, I'm not exactly sure. I think that would, that's a great question and we would have to talk more with Renee about that. My sense is that homeless outreach is is sort of a specialization. And I'm not sure that that the 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 social workers that are working in other parts of the city are doing the same things. And if they're trained, for example, to do the VISBDA assessment or if they have access to the HMIS system. So if they don't, I think, you know, it makes sense for them, of course, to overlap and to communicate. But there probably would be two different roles there. And, you know, we've we we talked a little bit with MUSD, the school district, and their McKinney Bento program. And, you know, they didn't feel like there was a lot of overlap between the the clients that are living on the street and and in the families that are in MUSD. But there might be a small overlap. And so the the long story short was, it would it would be a good idea for the police department, for MUSD, for city staff from different departments, as well as if there was to be an out, you know, an outreach team for them to meet regularly and at least figure out where the overlaps are, where the communication and coordination would be valuable.
Thank you.
And I was just gonna add a little bit to that too, that it's probably more supplemental, you know, to each other and supporting each other. And kind of making referrals across departmentally. Since the positions in Renee's department are focused on social service, but not, you know, natural housing. Whereas our building safety and housing department is much more focused on housing and efforts to end homelessness, so.
Yeah. Thank you for that presentation, Adam. So I've I've had a question on the timeline on the outreach, when the outreach worker brings in or assesses these folks. How long does it take for them to get services?
Um, yes, I don't know. I'm gonna I'm gonna look to Catherine if she's still there. I think it depends.
Yeah, I can I can take that one. So thank you, Councilmember, for your question. Yeah, it it definitely depends because the the community queue is kind of a fluid dynamic list based on need, somebody might be next in line today. And then tomorrow, they assess somebody with really high needs that is now, you know, above them on the queue. So it's designed to really serve those that are the most vulnerable. So somebody might be assessed today and get a referred to a program in the same week. And another household, it may be several weeks or months. So it it varies based on sort of what resources are available. You know, when we have a permanent supportive housing development come online that's ready for occupancy, then we may refer a larger number of people to PSH because we have, you know, 100 units of permanent supportive housing coming online at the same time. So it's both based on need and available resources and can vary.
Okay. On the second bullet, who says that one of the cons is that does not include intensive case management. So basically, this person is just going to be doing, the contract is just saying that they're going to do outreach. And you're going to bring him in or not bring him in, but you're going to assess or you're going to identify them and then assess them, and then that's it. And then the rest, so I'm I'm thinking, well, what's the point of just identifying a homeless person where you're not going to be giving him? You know, you're not, you're not going to be including intensive case management. And maybe maybe I'm I'm not understanding what exactly what is intensive case management. And then the other the other part too is the city cannot choose the outreach provider. When I feel that right there, that needs to change because the city, that the cities are, they know their community. And and I feel that we should be able to have an outreach provider that knows the city. You know, from the with the back of their hand and they they would, to me, they they would be able to provide better services because they know the community. And hopefully someone that lives in our city, I mean, can't we can't can't guarantee that. However, the cities should have some leverage on selecting and providing an outreach provider. And then the county, the county should be doing more of that wraparound services. So I'm I'm still a little bit not sure what this contract, this contract doesn't seem like it's really, it's just going to, we're just going to be identifying them. And maybe I'm wrong, so if you can, if you can enlighten me.
And I do want to mention that we have two other options to go through and I want to make sure you kind of consider them all together. Because as I mentioned, there are different trade offs, you know, so with the budget of of this amount, there's limits in how much case management can be done. And and Catherine, I don't know if you want to elaborate on on sort of the extent to which case management is offered from the the heat team.
Can I ask, does case management mean wraparound services? Providing or yeah, providing wraparound services, does that what that case management means?
So there there's varying levels of case management. So when we talk about intensive case management, and and of course, we use an acronym for it because we're bureaucracy and that's what we do. So ICM, intensive case management, is really the the sort of long term case management that people are connected to when they're in one of our housing programs. So they they may be working with a case manager for years on, you know, various aspects of their individual well being, mental health services, you know, healthcare, help with getting identification, connection to county benefits, sort of, you know, all of the wraparound services. So this outreach team, the heat team, doesn't provide that that intensive case management for a long period of time because they would really only be able to work with a handful of clients if it was that level of intensity. They they will provide act like, so so one, that sort of identification is is critical because if folks aren't identified and assessed, they will never get referred to a housing program because that's the way all of our housing programs are, take their referrals. So so it is critical, but they will also provide some light case management in terms of so what we would, you know, like referral to other resources. If somebody says, I want, I'm ready to go to a shelter or I'm looking for a shelter bed, will you help me? They may connect them with a shelter bed or another shelter provider. They may be able to do some of the the sort of referral work, meet some basic needs, provide information to them, but there it's not going to be a an ongoing long term relationship like we have when we talk about intensive case management, where people really only have a caseload of. Long-term relationship like we have when we talk about intensive case management where people really only have a caseload of, of 10 to 20 clients maximum.
So it's really just identify, assess and refer. Those three.
Yeah, and, and build relationships. Sometimes that identifying and assessing and referring takes time to build relationships too. So it might be multiple engagements. In order to, to, you know, get to the point where somebody says, yes, I'm willing to sit down with you for 20 minutes or 30 minutes. And talk through all of my needs, my vulnerabilities. So it's, it's relationship building, it's, it's, yeah, building trust and then taking it to the next step and getting into the coordinated assessment system.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess. I'm, I'm still a little bit on the, on bullet number two, city cannot choose outreach provider. That one. I feel like if we're going to be paying $75,000 or, or probably more. I feel that we should have a say so in, in. In our, in, in selecting that. Person to do our outreach in our community that knows our community. But I guess you have more to, to show us. Is this, okay, I'll let you go on.
Okay. All right. We'll go to the next slide, which is, again, we have three options. So we've looked at one. This is option, the second option or what we're calling option one B. Which is also partnering with the county, but instead of doing. A set, you know, outreach assessment. This is really what Catherine just described, which is intensive case management. And it's, and with it comes sort of set aside slots in permanent supportive housing. So I'll say that again, this is a, a completely different type of a contract. It's not an outreach contract. It's. It's really, you know, paying for, you know, case managers, I believe, at a site. And then having, you know, a number of, of rooms reserved for Milpitas residents who qualify for the program in that site. And of course that would. That's about $11,000 per client. And so, you know, for the same budget of 75,000, that would serve about six, six clients. So again, it's kind of the trade-off, you know, it's. What, what's, you know, for this first year, what's the best way to spend the funding that we do have? Or does it make sense to? You know, try to find more funding so that we can do some combination of. Outreach and case management, you know, I'll, I'll give you an example. A, a $200,000. Contract would, would serve roughly 18 clients and house them. And they would be off the street. So it's, it's more intensive, but it also is sort of the end goal, which is, which is housing people. So I think that in some ways it, it partially responds to your, your concern, council member, but it, it, it doesn't necessarily get people. Who aren't assessed and ready to go like the, the kind of two pieces, there's a two-step. You need to sort of boost this, boost assessments so that when, for example, a new development opens up like Sangio Court. You can then also have slots available and that, you know, those people can be placed there.
Yeah, my, can I, one more thing, now that you mentioned Sangio Court. So this has always been my concern and I'm sure the concern of the city council is that we want to make sure that. That the, our community is going to be. Provided services first because this is, I mean, this is Milpitas, the people that have lived in Milpitas, I feel that they should be, they should have first choice in, in being housed. Because they, they, they're in, they live here. And, and I don't know what the county, how they see that. So what, can you enlighten me on that? Tell me more on that. Do we get to select who gets to live at Sangio Court from the, our residents or is it the county that has the say, the last say so?
Catherine, did you want to?
Sure. Yeah. So, so for all of our permanent supportive housing developments, you know, the. The second option that, that Adam discussed of sort of setting aside slots for Milpitas. Clients specifically from Milpitas would, would achieve sort of a set aside for that. But for all supportive housing developments, you know, the, the process of referral and selection for those. Supportive housing units goes through the coordinated assessment system. The, the, what we've done with many of these developments in the past is sort of this, this. Targeted outreach in those areas to try to assess as many people as possible. And the result of that has been that, that. You know, people are referred from that area. But, you know, in general for countywide, for countywide funded programs. They're not all set aside for a specific community. So we, we. Do this targeted outreach to try to get as many folks from that area onto the queue, assess the most, the most that we can and they'll. Be referred through the coordinated assessment system that serves the entire county.
Yeah, I, I think. And then we need to have a, a more, a more in-depth discussion on that because that's the whole purpose why we're. You know, we're, we're pushing for this because we see a lot of our homeless populations in Milpitas and those are the ones we, you know. Each community takes care of each community. That's why we have cities. I mean, I'm sure, I'm, yes, it is a regional issue, but. It does, it makes sense for us to take care of our own here in Milpitas and they live here, they are residents. And of course, for them not to, to be. What's that? We're not, not overlooked, but to be. Superseded by someone else. It just. I, I don't know, it just seems to me we have to have that discussion. Maybe the housing subcommittee, the task force can also bring that up when they need. Cause it's, I think that's a. That's an issue. And when we have many folks that want to help our homeless residents here, community and, and if they're not going to be helped because. The county has their own rule system, you know, I just, it's. It's kind of disheartening for me. So. Maybe we can have that, the housing task force can bring that up at some point in time with the county board supervisors or somebody. Thank you.
Yeah, well, and I am anxious to see the, the third. Option. Because it, so is this building sort of? As I understood the first two so far now, one is. More about referral. This one is really about housing and the cost goes up. I'm anxious to see what the third one's going to be.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to quickly get to that. And that's, that's pretty much the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so. Sorry, this is still option one B. It's just the second slide and it's just a little bit more information about why staff isn't recommending it. They're all trade-offs. You know, this is year one, you know, so it's possible that this could be something that's done in year two after outreach has already been done. You know, once we know a little bit more about our clients and, and, and whatnot. Yeah, so next slide to the third and final option. So as we, we mentioned here, option two, which is the final of the three that we're presenting. Would be to work directly with a community-based organization to provide full-time. A dedicated team of two, two Milpitas to do outreach assessment and case management services. So sort of that more intensive. Working with clients right up until the point where they are placed. Placed in housing, at which point I, I believe they have the option, I don't, well. At which point they would probably, you know, use the case manager that's sort of affiliated with that development. If I understand that Catherine, you can correct me if that's wrong. And the, the pros of this approach is that it's full-time, it's higher level of service. So that means faster response times, you know, instead of 24 to 48 hours. It's again, it, it adds case management. They can spend more time in Milpitas. And it allows us to choose the provider. Next slide. However, it costs more. So, you know, it's. More than double our current budget. It may not leverage the mental health emphasis that is sort of one of the strengths of the county's heat team. And so again, not knowing. Yet. How many of our residents in Milpitas are suffering from mental illness and, and, and if that's part of the reason they're still on the street and not seeking. Not being able to be assessed or fully assessed. Then, you know, that's, that's an area that's sort of unclear whether. That mental health emphasis would be beneficial or not. Or more beneficial. This option would not guarantee slots in permanent supportive housing. While it would, it would be, you know, case management, I don't believe it would. Kind of set aside slots in, in a building. And the reason that we are not recommending it this time is primarily the cost. You know, so far as we know, you know, that's quite a bit more than what we have to work with. And, you know, it may not fully leverage some of the, the services that the county offers. Through their, through their team. And I think that's the last slide. What, one more? Oh, yes. And these are the recommendations. So I'll just end my piece now, then we can sort of go from there. You know, our recommendations are here. I provide any feedback on this, these proposed services. And at least at this point in time, you know, staff is, is. Was asking for a recommendation for option one A, but it sounds like there's more discussion to be had. So. With that, I'll step back and, and let you guys discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Chair Montana, I just wanted to check it, if you want to go to public comment.
Oh, Robert, yeah. That would be great. We can do that now.
Thank you. We have two public comments for this item. The first one is from Lisa Moreno. It says, good afternoon. We hope for the unhoused are in support of option one A. Revenue sharing agreement with the county of Santa Clara. We have encountered many unhoused that have specific needs that are not being met. And they need to be added to the permanent housing waiting list. We understand that due to COVID-19, the homeless outreach team is not providing resources outlined in the attached report to the unhoused. As such, we are formally asking if we hope for the unhoused can have access to these resources to provide them as needed. Our group is in touch with many of our unhoused. And have learned what they need. We are providing them resources. However, we are also using our personal funds to do so. Additionally, we understand that grant funds of $85,568 provided by the California Board of, of State and Community Corrections in 2017.
Oh, so there's a lot of feedback here.
Forgive me.
Okay. So for me, for my two cents, I, I'd like to have further discussion on this because I'm not ready. Especially when, when I know that. Our community is not going to be served first. It's. And you know, if. And who knows, maybe, maybe if I get some good arguments why that's the case. Then, then I could proceed to select one of the options. But for me. I would rather have another discussion and maybe when the housing task force can bring that up to the county board supervisors or whoever is in, in charge of that. But like I said, if, if there are some valid reasons why that has to be that way, then, you know, so yeah, at least, at least give me, give me a reason. That's all I'm asking. Just give me some. Some logical reasons why that has to be that way. And then. And then I will decide, then I will make my recommendation which one. But. Vice Mayor, would you have, do you have any comments? Do you, do you want to select one or now or?
Well, so Robert, did you say there were two public comments or just one?
Yes, sir. There is two public comments.
Okay. So let me hear the second one first, if I could.
Sure. This one is from Irvish Metta. Two city council members and housing subcommittee. The county has approached in January 2020 to place homeless housing near correctional facility. The homeless housing is required to be placed where school, plaza and recreational areas can be made as well. I request city council and committee to have homeless housing, homeless housing be placed to better place around McCarthy Ranch Place instead. Sincerely, Irvish Metta.
Thank you, thank you. So. Make sure I'm on. So I. If I go back to, I, I don't need you to go back to it. I just, if I go back to the recommendation, I think it's at the October 8th. Is when the final recommendation from the task force is due. The countywide task force. So I have a few questions. That I. So let me make sure I get, I want to say this correctly. I agree with the council member that we need to get a little more information. One. Decisions we make today, are they going to be applied regionally? So that. If this is going to be for Milpitas or for the North Region. Number two, exactly who's included in the Northern Region? When I say it, I usually include North San Jose, Albezo. But I would like to know exactly who that includes. Number three. I think within the city. I personally believe that we have it. Our services to the houseless. Is spread. Over at least two departments or divisions. And that's one too many. I think it needs to be all housed in one. Because I've already seen things slip through the cracks. And so I think we need to decide. Where it's going to be housed and, and how it's going to be staffed. So we know how to make this decision. Number three. I for one have. A strong belief that the county is. A, a structure that. Delivers strong services. That you can rely on. But like a city. Doesn't. Change course real quickly. CBOs do. So the information we asked about. What the difference in the costs and the delivery of services at the onset. I think we need to all of those things to be able to make a recommendation back to the full city council. So I would ask staff, how soon could we get that information so we can meet again? And then make this decision.
So I, I want to just interject here. So just to clarify, I, I do, I think option one A is the way to go. However, there's just that one, that, that one area that. How do, well, actually two, the hiring process. Of. A community, we cannot hire our own. Or maybe is that, is that an addition or we can still do an addition? I'm not sure. And then the other one is of course that our residents should be. The ones to be living here, if they live here. I mean, they should get. First choice. That was, that's the whole purpose why we have housing advocates to house our. Milpitas homeless. And so that discussion needs to take place because I think that other cities don't know. They don't know that. They think it's just for their residents, but I think there's a. I don't think they, they know or they realize. I think there's, there needs to be a serious discussion with all the cities on that housing task force. So anyway, just to make that clear that.
And for us. Right. And I agree, council member. And for Milpitas, we're doing that Thursday night. And then another opportunity is Saturday. So, so we will have that opportunity to, to start doing that. Yeah, I'm not opposed. Like I said, I, I think the, the county always makes the strong partner. I, I just like to know the, the difference, if the difference is. Just for the sake of the conversation, if the difference is. 200,000 versus 50,000, that's a big difference. But if it's 200,000 versus 175,000, to me, that isn't a difference at all. If the kinds and types of services. Are equal. I don't think there's really much of a, of a question. I also think that if you look at Sangio Court, I know that as a city, I, I sort of understand. Our desire to make sure that our residents. Are given preference. But I also know the, the county. preference. But I also know the, the county put in a large sum of money also. Um, and so, so, yeah. So I don't want to get into how much did you put in, uh, because I'm not sure our stack of dollars would equal theirs. Uh, but I do want to, to fully understand from staff, um, you know, how do we make sure that, um, whatever consideration, that we take advantage of that for ours? Um, so, so it's things like that, that in this presentation, I, I, I understand, but I want to more fully understand. I am not opposed at all to being a partner with the county. I, I always find...
I'm not either. I'm not either. I'm just saying that because, because remember, we, we are, we, the city, we, the cities and, and all of Santa Clara County are all putting in a substantial amount of money and land. So it's not just one-sided. And I feel that at least, you know, at least we should be, we should be guaranteed so many, a percentage of slots for our residents. You know, I'm not saying the whole thing, but, uh, there has to be something, there has to be an agreement, some kind of acknowledgement. Yes, uh, we will make sure that, uh, Milpitas residents will have some, not say all, some slots in that housing. Cause that's, that's very important for, I feel the community needs to hear that. So, and, and we as the council, we, we're the ones that make those decisions and we make those part, create those partnerships. And we want to make, we have, want to make sure that we have good partners that will, um, be able to assist our homeless in Milpitas. So that's, that's all I'm saying. No, no, I do agree.
Sure.
The county partnership is very important, but the devil is in the details. And that's what, what, that's what I want to make sure that that's resolved.
So let me walk myself backwards. So city manager, when do you, do we need to take this to the council for, um, uh, discussion and final vote? When do you need to take it there? I can't hear you.
Oh, yes, I'll jump in. Um, yeah, we will, um, try our best to redo all this research in the next couple of weeks and bring it back to the council. Probably the second meeting in October, just because the first one is coming up already, which means we'll basically need to have it done in a week.
So we would have to have our meeting before then?
Yes. Yeah. And we are looking to schedule another housing subcommittee, yes, in a few weeks.
Okay. Um, and, and so we want to make sure that, uh, we're not giving you, uh, a task that's undoable is, I, I don't, I don't feel that any of those questions so far are undoable. Uh, it's, it sounds to me as if we're leaning the way of the recommendation. We just need additional facts. Um, but if though, and I want to make sure that the additional information is something you feel you can gather at the time that's allotted is. So is that reasonable to, uh, to expect?
Um, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So Sharon, maybe this, uh, so for clarification. So right now our city is in the process of hiring a community worker slash social worker person to do this type of outreach. And then this, uh, item one A for the county partnership, is that part of the, or is, are we doing our separate one? So I need that clarification.
Um, yeah, I think the position that's being recruited for, um, it's not doing this type of work. And that is in Renee's department. So I don't know if Steve can help with some of the details. Um, uh, I know that position is not conducting, um, street outreach for the homeless. Um, I think that person is actually, um, assisting Tegan with a lot of that, the work that she's been doing.
Wait, 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 what a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. No, that's not right. That's not what the council had asked. Um, you need to go back and somebody needs to go back and find out what, there needs to be some clarification here because that is not what we had asked. This is why we're opening up that one position. Yes, they can do part of what Megan does or help, but one of the focus areas was to do some type of outreach. So now I'm, now you're opening up a whole new can of worms here. And, um, and I think this is something that we need to have a further discussion on because, um, there's something's not, there's some kind of miscommunication here. And I don't know if it's done intentionally or unintentionally, what's going on, but we need to get to the bottom of this. And I, and that's why I asked you, is this, is this position with the county position or is this our own city position? Is, is, and, and you didn't answer me. You just said it's something else. So I'm, I'm, I'm getting frustrated and, and I need some answers. And, and I don't want to take up more time than what needs to, that we've already taken. But I remember clearly the council wanted an outreach person. Doesn't necessarily have to be a social worker, but an outreach person to help our homeless in Milpitas, which are residents here. And so, you know, it's all about, uh, resource adequacy. So, and we're obligated to serve our disadvantaged, that are homeless here. So that's what, that's what I'm getting at. And that's why that's this whole, that job description was to do that. And now I'm getting a different answer. So Bob, do you have any questions, any comments?
So. You guys, well, you guys hear me? No, we can't.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, so I can just tell you that, that my recollection is the same as a council member.
All right. Uh, so for, for the essence of time, because we don't want to be here, we only have what, half, half an hour left. Uh, and I know we have a full agenda. Uh, why don't we bring it back? I'm going to make a recommendation to bring this back and not make any decisions.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. So that's our, our decision today. And, uh, we want to bring this back because we need some, some answers. We need some, uh, some questions answered. So, thank you. Next item.
Project Home Key.
Hello, somebody?
Yeah, I think Robert's pulling that up. I didn't see. Okay. Okay. Thanks, Robert. All right. You can go to the next slide. Um, so we're going to be looking at this state program. Um, yeah. So Project Home Key is part of the state's response to protecting individuals and families experiencing homelessness or those who are at risk of experiencing homelessness. It's administered by the Department of Housing and Community Development as a state program. They've made six hundred million dollars of grant funding available to local entities who may apply jointly with development partners. And the purpose is to purchase and convert hotels, motels, vacant apartment buildings, um, and to convert these into interim or permanent housing. Of the six hundred million, five hundred fifty million is for acquisition, and that was derived from California's allocation from the Federal Cares Act. And, and because of that federal, um, funding, there's a requirement that this must be expended by December thirtieth, twenty twenty, which is coming up very soon. And, um, one of the reasons for that is, um, the Home Key program is trying to, uh, meet, uh, meeting the urgency of the homeless crisis, which was exacerbated by the pandemic. So they're really trying to prioritize, um, the speed and are looking to award grants to project proposals that can be accomplished quickly. And because the pandemic, um, has been impacting people experiencing homelessness throughout the state, HCD has divided the state into eight regions for the funding. Now, for the Bay Area, ninety-one million was allocated out of the five hundred fifty million. Out of the six hundred million, there was another fifty million that was derived from the state's general fund, and this was for operations cost. In our region, Santa Clara County took the lead to identify potential projects that could compete successfully for the Home Key grant and also meeting the very strict requirements. They've, um, uh, submitted, um, application as a co-applicant with Affordable Housing Developer Jamboree Housing Corporation. And the proposal is converting the Extended Stay America Hotel that's located adjacent to freeway, uh, I six eighty, uh, into a permanent supportive housing facility. Next slide. And you saw this, um, supportive housing system from the county in the earlier presentation under item B. Um, but this, uh, project is looking at, um, converting a hotel into permanent supportive housing. Now, as we heard earlier, permanent supportive housing programs help residents who are chronically homeless and who have disabling conditions. Permanent supportive housing provides intensive case management, a long-term rental subsidy, healthcare services, behavioral health services, and they also streamline access to benefits. Next slide. So this was the application that was submitted. It's the Extended Stay America Hotel at one thousand Hillview Court by six eighty. Next slide. So here are more details about the project. Um, it's proposing to convert the existing hundred forty-six room hotel into a one hundred thirty-two unit supportive housing, permanent supportive housing facility with two managers' units. And it'll have onsite supportive, supportive services as well. All the units have kitchenettes and the ground floor community space will have a lot of amenities. As you see on the list, uh, it'll have, uh, case management offices, counseling rooms, computer room, uh, a large room for social gatherings uh, after the pandemic, uh, and kitchen and laundry. And there will also be onsite programs for wellness classes, life skills, and educational programs. And the Home Key Grant Program has incorporated habitability and accessibility requirements into the program. And the projects have to meet accessibility requirements under the California Building Code as well as the Americans with Disabilities Act, which ADA Title II. The units that will feature, um, that will have features accessible to persons with mobility disabilities, that will be included and the facility will be upgraded for that. Uh, there'll also be units with features accessible to persons with hearing or vision disability. Uh, so there's going to be a little bit of work, but it's pretty minor rehabilitation work. So there's a short construction period. And because of the very, um, challenging timeline for the, uh, Home Key Grant, that's what makes the project competitive for the grant. And in alignment with the grant program, the facility is going to be housing and protecting individuals experiencing homelessness. The county and Jamboree Housing have applied for, uh, twenty-nine point two million Home Key Grant. And as we saw earlier, the Bay Area allocation was ninety-one million. So that's thirty-two percent of the allocation. Um, and that shows this project has a significant and, uh, very large impact of providing permanent housing solutions for those most in need. Um, the county is also, um, going to be matching the grant with funds from Measure Eight. That's the Affordable Housing Bond, um, the county approved in twenty sixteen. This will be the first development in Milpitas that's fully dedicated for permanent supportive housing. Um, and it'll be a very major step to address the critical housing needs of the most vulnerable in our community. And the project, um, like this type, really transforms lives for the chronically homeless. Next slide. On June twenty ninth, the governor approved and signed, uh, Assembly Bill Number Eighty-three. This bill provides significant land use streamlining for projects utilizing Home Key grant funds. And the, uh, of those provisions, Home Key projects will not be subject to any discretionary review or approvals. This means that any project awarded Home Key grant funds is deemed consistent with local general plan and zoning ordinance. That means these Home Key projects are allowed by right and are not subject to discretionary review or approval. AB eighty-three also will allow project units to be counted toward the regional housing needs allocation or RENA. And I know, uh, the Housing Subcommittee, uh, is very familiar with that. Um, and the city still has some more work to do in the, uh, lower income categories. And this project will have hundred thirty-two very low or extremely low income units that will be counted toward Milpitas RENA goals. Next slide. Uh, the Home Key Grant Award, uh, HCD was indicating that they would be awarding the grant award, award on a rolling basis. And I just updated the slide last night, uh, because yesterday, they announced, uh, the governor announced that the Milpitas project was awarded the twenty-nine point two million dollars for the Home Key Grant. Um, and Jamboree Housing Destination Home and the county will be holding a neighborhood meeting with the community in October. That's being planned in single works. Because of the critical timeline for the project, the city is working well with our stakeholders, particularly Jamboree, um, to phase the project and to look at submitting building permits in, uh, different packages for the accessibility upgrades and the community space. This approach is going to allow the rehabilitation work and the renovation work to happen faster and to happen quickly in order to meet a timeline. Uh, and then county staff is going to be going to their board of supervisors for Measure Eight funding as matching grant in October. To meet the Home Key timeline requirements, uh, to expand the funds by the end of the year, this project plans to close, uh, sometime in November. And as mentioned earlier, as part of the building permit process, uh, we're also looking at phasing the units during construction, um, and for the inspection of those as well. This is going to be planned in blocks to further help streamline the process. And this way, it will allow the units to be occupied sooner when life safety and accessibility requirements are met, uh, while other portions of the building can continue to be rehabilitated as long as the access to the required exits and life safety features are maintained for the residents of the building. Next slide. The Home Key Program is very new, unique. It's the first of its kind. And as you heard in the, uh, prior to presentation, homelessness is a regional issue. Uh, so it requires regional collaboration and partnership. And so you can see, um, the city has been, um, coordinating with all of our partners, uh, in this unique public-private partnership and contributing to the effort to end homelessness. This project also aligns with the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five community plan to end homelessness. Um, you saw that, um, uh, toward the end of the presentation for the first item, where you saw the three, uh, strategies. Uh, so this project directly aligns with the goals of that plan. So of the partners, uh, you see on the screen, county and Jamboree are co-applicants for the Home Key Grant. Uh, Milpitas being serving as a facilitator and helping to streamline the review and inspection process so that the minor rehabilitation work can be accomplished quickly. And Destination Home has been serving as a leading education and advocacy organization, um, for developing stra- for developing strategies to end homelessness, particularly in Santa Clara County. So with this, I'm going to turn this over to Destination Home to introduce themselves.
Good.
Robert, if you could pull up your slide.
Working on it right now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Coming up.
Sorry, Ray.
No problem. Sure. Just wait for the slide to come up, but I'll say, because I know we're on a tight time budget, good afternoon, Vice Mayor and Councilmember. Thank you for the opportunity to present here today. My name is Ray Bramson, and the Chief Operating Officer with Destination Home. As Sharon mentioned, Destination Home is a public-private partnership founded over ten years ago under a Blue Ribbon Commission in Santa Clara County with the goal of ending homelessness locally. We have a wide range of activities that we engage in, but we're a funder. We put money directly into projects and into initiatives and strategies that we think can help prevent and end homelessness. We research and incubate innovative solutions. We promote housing-driven outcomes that put people permanently off the streets and into safe, stable environments, and we convene lots of different groups. The Community Plan to End Homelessness is an excellent example of this, where we've worked with partners from Palo Alto all the way down to Gilroy on trying to come together and have a single voice of what we can do in our community to end homelessness. In the case of this event of Jamboree Housing and Project Home Key, Destination Home funded Jamboree over a year ago, before we knew Project Home Key existed, as a high-quality affordable housing and supportive housing developer to come here to Santa Clara County to look for a project exactly like this. The introduction of Home Key gave us the opportunity to fund and create over fifty million dollars of state and county money coming into Milpitas, meeting your RENA goals while costing the city exactly zero dollars to move this forward. So this is an amazing leverage opportunity. And why did we do all this? Next slide, please, Robert. It's because we know housing ends homelessness. There is absolutely no question. What we've seen over the last five years, where we've housed more people in Santa Clara County than ever before collectively as a community, we've housed thousands and thousands of people. We've also seen every person that we're putting into these permanent supportive housing solutions, ninety percent of the time, they're staying housed. So it's the best intervention, intervention out there, and it's making a considerable difference in an enormous problem. Next slide, please. Listen, we know that homelessness is impacting our community. If you live in Milpitas, you can walk around and see the impacts of it every day, along the freeways, six eighty, and eight eighty, along your major corridors, even down Calaveras. There's challenges in the community. There's no question about it. We also know that our population is diverse. We have an aging population with more and more seniors on the streets every day. We have a lot of kids exiting foster care and with nowhere else to go or ending up on the streets. And then there are a number of people with physical and mental disabilities without that deep support that you get from permanent supportive housing are just not going to be able to make it here in Santa Clara County or anywhere else. But we know we also have a proven solution that works, saves money, and means that we're going to start creating assets for the community, just like Hillview Court. Next slide, please. And we have to do this because homelessness is everywhere. There's ten thousand people in our last point in time count that we saw on the streets of Santa Clara County. Seventy-five percent of that population is unsheltered. That means they're living outside night after night on creek banks, under overpasses, in places unfit for human habitation. Milpitas is one city in the county, but homelessness is everywhere. And this is not, while we need to, while every city needs to do its part, no one city can end homelessness, even its own city on their own. It's a community problem, and it really does require a community solution. Next slide, please. Because these are, more than anything else from this slide, I want you to remember that these are our neighbors. Eighty-one percent of the people who ended, that are on the streets right now, lived here in Santa Clara County before they became homeless. Over a third of the population is experiencing homelessness for the first time, and we know that number is going to skyrocket with the pandemic and the economic shutdown. And we also see this wave, tidal wave of eviction coming, so there's more people that are going to be on the streets soon if we don't act. So these are our people, these are our neighbors, and we need to do something for them as quickly as possible. Next slide. And that's why you've heard a lot today about permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing. It's all based around a concept called Housing First. And Housing First is the idea that if you can get someone off the streets and into a home, you're going to be able to address all of the other challenges they're facing and see much, much greater outcomes. Be happy to share with council at any time a new study by UCSF that found, that looked at two hundred of the most vulnerable residents in Santa Clara County who went through an intensive permanent supportive housing program that used these Housing First principles. Eighty-six percent of this population in a randomized controlled trial, a scientific study, were able to be housed and stabilized and reduce the drain on the emergency system, reduce the drain on hospitals and ERs. So we see this working, and we know it's getting better. And what's most exciting, next slide, please, is that we're doing it everywhere. Every little house you see on this map are new homes, permanent supportive housing and rapid rehousing, and places for people to go. We're building them as far south as Gilroy and as far north as Palo Alto. With San Jose taking the lion's share, but every, we're trying to get every community in on it. Milpitas has been a great partner in this work so far with sites like Sango and the willingness and interest in trying to figure out how to make things happen. And, you know, what we have here today is an opportunity not to wait three or five years to get housing built for our most vulnerable people, but housing a hundred and thirty-two units, not a small amount, can be ready early next year, dramatically changing the lives and the trajectories of these folks. And we're very, very fortunate to have Jamboree Housing here with us today, who's not only a leader in affordable housing development throughout the state of California, but also has direct experience working with the conversion of hotels and motels, just like the Extended Stay, to make, to turn them into permanent homes. So I think with that, I will turn it over to Roger, and I want to thank you again for your time today and your interest in the subject.
Hello, my name is Roger Kinoshita with Jamboree Housing, I'm a senior director. I do have some slides. Is it Robert who's doing them?
Yes, Roger, I'll bring it up. And I'll go full screen in a second. All right, sorry about the wait.
Great. Vice Mayor and Councilmember, thank you very much for the opportunity today. Once again, my name is Roger Kinoshita, and I'm with Jamboree Housing. Jamboree Housing is a nonprofit affordable housing developer. We're celebrating our thirtieth year. Our mission is to deliver high-quality affordable housing and services that transforms lives and strengthens communities. Jamboree is one of California's largest nonprofit developers of affordable housing. Next slide, please. Next slide. Here's a little brief overview of who Jamboree is. We are, once again, we're a thirty-year-old nonprofit affordable housing developer. We have approximately ninety-three properties in our portfolio with about nine thousand units, and we provide housing every day for about nineteen thousand residents or California residents. And our mission is, is our driving force. It's, as mentioned, it's to deliver the high-quality housing and, most importantly, the supportive services that transforms those lives. And next slide, please. The populations we serve are families, seniors, those with special needs, those that are coming from homelessness, as well as veterans. Next slide, please. What does supportive housing look like? This is a snapshot of our permanent supportive housing portfolio throughout California. Hero's Landing is our newest, new, new development, new construction. It provides housing for seventy-five, has seventy-five units, hundred percent for veterans, as well as working with the VA to provide services and working with our local service providers. We also have a property in Sacramento. We were the first to utilize the Mental Health Services Act money. Jamboree's been involved with permanent supportive housing since two thousand and three. Our most recent, we've also done a conversion of an old hotel in Sacramento called The Studios at Hotel Berry, which is approximately a hundred and five units. Our current project that's under rehabilitation or renovation is called Buena Esferanza in Anaheim. It's a motel conversion of sixty-nine units to permanent supportive housing. Next slide, please. The Hillview Court, which is currently the Extended Stay America Hotel, the vision is a hundred and thirty-two studio apartments with leases and six thousand square feet of community space to provide the space that, for the wraparound and extensive case management services that were discussed earlier during this meeting. There will be twenty-four-seven onsite staff. There'll be two property managers, as well as we'll be working with the county service provider. And Jamboree will also be providing their own supportive services staff to complement the county staff. Next slide, please. Here's a photo of the interior of the units. The, what's really nice about the property is not only is it in great condition and move-in ready, but is the fact that it already has the kitchenettes built in. So these are ready to be moved into as soon as we can. Next slide, please. Jamboree is offering oversight and coordination of the services, as well as onsite resident services team, and we're going to be tightly integrated with the property management team, not only dealing with, say, housing issues that are common with residents, but also making sure that we're well-coordinated with the, not the housing, but also the services and the needs of the residents. And we want to know on a regular basis what's going on with the residents and how we can assist or how we can bring in other service providers or work with the county service providers to provide that robust wraparound intensive case management necessary for our residents. Next slide, please. That's my end of my presentation. Thank you very much, once again, for your time.
Thank you so much. You did a great job. Destination Home is well-known. We're doing a great job in all of Santa Clara County. I'm glad that you guys came and did a presentation here. I'm in full support of the things you do. Just one question, when you, because I know we need to move on this, so that way the construction permits and the whole bed needs to be on time and on target. Just, I guess, the same questions that I had, I just want to make sure that we, our residents do have first choice or some slots, some slots that are there for them. So that's my only concern. But yeah, it's, it needs to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Montanam?
Yes, Sharon.
Do you want to check for public comments right now?
Oh, yeah, sure. Great, thank you. Yeah, Robert?
For this item, we do not have any public comments.
Public comments, okay. Right now, it is four oh five. Was this the last presentation? I don't see my agenda in front of me.
We still have two more.
Two more items.
Okay, well, we're past our time, but we will go ahead and extend it for the sake of getting, getting through this. If you don't have a, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor?
Sure, 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 I'm fine. So I would also like to say I'm really interested in the outcome here for Project Home Key. I know it is, I'm not quite sure when it's on the County Board of Supervisors' agenda, but I do know that there is some kind of community education briefing that's coming up, Sharon, you told me, but I'm interested in following this through. I do want to thank the staff for all the work that they did and their participation in this project. There was a slide there that was shown that talked about that we can't forget, these really are all of our, the citizens really are all ours, or for Milpitas. And so I go back to what the council member said. Any one of our residents that we can get into those slots, it's important. So thank you for all the work that you did.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmember. No, it's really a collaborative effort with all the stakeholders you heard from, as well as the county. I know Steve had a little bit of audio issue earlier.
Sure.
I don't know, but can you hear us, Steve?
Well, the question is, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so I understood several of you could hear me and several of you could not, so I had to reboot, just to be sure you could all hear me. My only comments were really related to the previous item, just on the comments on the Program Coordinator for Social Services. So I just wanted to clarify, and I'm certainly happy, you know, would like to actually provide you maybe in some kind of informational memo or something to the two, the two Subcommittee Members of the, the job description in the background to the job description, in which the council provided input, because a lot of the information that Sharon was giving you, granted, she didn't have the, the job description in front of her, but she was giving you a bit of an overview. And I think Adam also provided a little bit of context in that position that is under the Recreation, Recreation and Community Services Department, and it does report to the Community Engagement and Inclusion Administrator. But you might recall, there were three components to that position. One, it was overseeing the MAP program, which is the Milpitas Assistance Program, that actually oversees also the Hope or the Suicide Prevention piece, and then it has the Social Service Programs. And I think that's where Adam was referring to, and maybe Sharon too, that there might be some, there would be coordination between what's going on in housing, the outreach in housing versus what's happening under Social Services. But the Social Services Programs, you know, that includes the seniors, the teens, the LGBTQ, the low-income disabled, and then we're talking about the unhoused. So I think that piece of the unhoused is important, and that was the, maybe the coordinated effort. But I don't know how much more I can give you other than, you know, because I don't want to take all the time up here, just wanted to be sure that it's understood with that position and the intent of that position. It wasn't designed to go out and do the, all the housing programs that we're talking about here. That's why staff's presenting these various service programs and levels of service in terms of outreach and in case, case management, et cetera. Those are full-time, heavy, really heavy lifts, and if they were easy, they'd be great. But they're not, and so that's why we're delving into all these, all these assortments and levels of program service to the unhoused, if that makes at least some sense. I'm sorry I got cut off and wasn't able to interject at the time that that item was being discussed, but I did want to make sure the public say that there's some understanding of where that position is in relationship to all the services we're talking about in this Subcommittee.
Yeah, there was some miscommunication or misinterpretation of some sort, but I'd like to bring this back to the city council as a whole, so that way we can make sure that it's clear, just so clear what it is that, that they wanted, what we wanted. And, yeah, if you can bring in the next city council meeting, we could at least, at least bring it, bring it to light. That's it, just for clarification. Thank you. Thank you. The next item is
D?
D, discuss, excuse me, discuss status of Santa Clara. Oh, and I want to thank the, the folks that came, Ray. And thank you for Project Destination. You're doing a fantastic job of housing our homeless. You know, we, these are, especially now, these are unprecedented times. We have a moral obligation to try to assist these people. And then you're right, it's, it, it hasn't hit home yet. There's going to be more people that are going to be homeless because of the pandemic. You know, it's rooted in this pandemic and people losing their jobs. And it's, and so I'm glad that you're, you're on board. And so we need to move this project forward, so that way if people can hurry up and get housed. Because I see a lot of them living in the streets and in their cars, so got to get these things moving. So thank you so much. And Steve, thank you for your comments. And we'll, you know, if you can bring that up on our next agenda, so we can discuss it. Just to be clear, that way there won't be any miscommunication or misinterpretation, and that way we can resolve it. Our next item is D, Discuss Status of Santa Clara County, County-wide Isolation and Quarantine Services Related to COVID-19.
Thank you, Chair Montano. Yeah, we have a representative from the county who's going to give you a status update on the program. And you just heard about this program at the last council meeting, so this is very timely. Turn it over to Hong.
Good morning, Councilmember Montano and Vice Mayor Nunes. Or good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's been a long day.
Right.
And so, following up on the council's approval of the partnership between the County of Santa Clara and the City of Milpitas to provide isolation and quarantine support for residents in Milpitas. I'm here to give you an overview of the program and provide a status update of the services that we have provided to fifteen Milpitas households. Next slide, please. And so here is a flowchart that our team uses in coordination with the County of Santa Clara's Public Health Department, specifically the Case Investigation and Contact Tracing, otherwise known as CICT, which I think you've heard of that acronym before, to determine whether the individual will need isolation or quarantine support, depending on their current living situation. So we have two options as part of our assessment. The first is if the individual is able to safely isolate at home, then we will provide at-home support, such as food delivery, as well as rental assistance and other services in coordination with the County Social Services Agency, such as CalFresh, Cowworks, Medi-Cal, and general assistance if the household is eligible to receive these, these services. And we also coordinate with our COVID-19 Assistance Call Center, otherwise known as CAN-19, to connect folks to EDD resources for unemployment and disability insurance, paid family leave, safety net services, and as well as referral to legal advice. And if the individual is unable to safely isolate or quarantine at home, then we will provide a placement for the individual, along with any other household members at one of our two hotels, so that they can safely isolate or quarantine. Next slide, please. So this is specific to the workflow that I just went through, is our program referral process. And we coordinate with our Public Health Department, the Case Investigation and Contact Tracing Unit. And how the process begins is, once the individual receives the test results for COVID-19, and if the individual tests positive for COVID-19, then our team will receive the referral from the county contact tracer to notify us that the individual has tested positive and will need assistance with housing, as well as food and other resources. And, and then we, our staff, IQ Support Team, will then begin the intake process and make the assessment to identify what needs the, we can provide the individual and other members of their household that may have been exposed to COVID-19. Next slide, please. And this is, again, just another workflow, because we also have a shelter hotline that provides services and shelter placement to the unhoused population, as well as the house population for those that are exposed to COVID-19 or have tested positive for COVID-19. Next slide. And as mentioned earlier, we received referrals from the county's contact tracing team. Or once the individual receives their test results, they can call our hotline directly to receive services, rather than waiting for us to contact them. And at that point, you know, that will initiate the, the intake process. Next slide, please. And this is just an overview. We are seven days a week, eight to five. And if anyone calls after hours, then we will respond to them the following day at 8:00 AM. Next slide. And the following slides will provide an overview countywide of the isolation and quarantine support program, since we implemented this, this as a pilot program back in June, June, June of this year. Next slide. So as you can see, from June seventeen to September sixteen, we have assisted a total of nine hundred and fifty-seven referrals for households. And this includes food resources, rental and household assistance. That's the highest need of those households that have tested positive for COVID-19 or have been exposed to COVID-19. The second highest is food and cleaning supplies. So for those households that can safely isolate or quarantine at home, we will provide grocery deliveries, as well as cleaning supplies, so that they can continue to safely isolate and quarantine at home, without having to leave their home and potentially expose other people. Next slide, please. Us, next slide. And this is a pie chart that provides a breakdown of the referrals that we've received from August third through September sixteen. So as you know, the agreement with the City of Milpitas is retroactive to August first. And we have completed a total of six hundred and five referrals, with one hundred and twenty-six of those households declining services. And eighty-one, we were not able to reach. And for those that are ineligible, they usually reside out of Santa Clara County, or they were not a confirmed COVID-19 case or contact. Next slide. And this provides the breakdown countywide by city. So as you can see, as the staff report had referenced, the highest number of cases and contacts are in the City of San Jose. And we provided assistance to seven hundred and fifty-nine households. In the City of Milpitas, we have supported a total of fifteen households through September sixteen. Next slide. And the following slides provides the details for the fifteen households that we provided assistance to in the City of Milpitas. Next slide. So of the fifteen households, eleven have been provided food and cleaning supplies. Ten have requested for rental and household assistance. So in addition to rental assistance, we can also provide financial assistance so that households can pay for their utilities, such as PG&E or water bill, or any additional assistance that's needed. And we have referred three households to our Social Services Agency, so that they can apply for CalFresh, Cowworks, Medi-Cal, or general assistance if they are eligible. And we have referred twelve households to other needs. So this covers additional food resources that Second Harvest provides. Or this also includes folks that we have referred to our COVID-19 Assistance Hotline for legal assistance, as well as EDD or unemployment or disability benefits that they may qualify for. Next slide. And, and this shows that we have provided in-home support to five and then, as well as ten, also received rental assistance. And that concludes, oh, and I apologize, I have two more slides. This is the referrals for the City of Milpitas by date. So as the agreement mentions, the city, the County of Santa Clara will cover any costs or any services provided to residents prior to August first. So, so far, so those are three households. And then we have a total of twelve households since August first. And we have the referrals by age group, as well as by race and ethnicity. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments or questions for her?
No, I don't.
Chair Montano?
Yes.
If I can, yeah, if I can have Sarah jump in here. Because last week, we had a chance to meet with Hong and her team. And after we understood this program, we talked about how we can better coordinate the rental assistance here to work with our rent relief program. So Sarah?
Sure. We had just discussed with Hong, you know, if, after the initial rent relief they receive from, or that the individuals receive through their program, if they need extended rent relief or more assistance after that. We're going to kind of set up a collaboration with our rent relief program, so that they can receive further assistance if they need it after getting assistance through this program. So we're going to work with connecting them with SBILC or directly with city staff to make referrals from their program to our program for extended service to Milpitas residents.
Great. That's great. So I have a question for Hong. Hong, are there any other cities? You know, we have a very unique rent relief program that was started way back before the COVID started. And we're so thankful that, that our city council had the foresight to take a proactive approach and to provide these services of rent relief. And we know we can't help everybody, but you know, it's a goodwill gesture from our, our city council to our community, especially for those that were, for those that are struggling. And now it's even worse because of the COVID. So I wanted to ask you, how many other cities have this type of program in the county that you're aware of?
Specific to rent relief, I, I know that a few cities have using CARES allocation that they've received, have partnered with community-based organizations to provide COVID-19 financial and rental assistance. But specific to rent relief, as it relates to the Milpitas program, I am not aware of a specific rent relief program. But certainly I can find more information and provide an update to Sharon and her team to share with you.
Yeah, and I think we are probably the first and the only ones to be prior to COVID-19. And I really want to, and I'm sharing that because it just shows the, the ingenuity of our city council and our city that, you know, we're, take a pro, we, we, we don't just say, yeah, we'll, you know, forget you, you know, when, because it all started with the rent control. But yet, it wasn't just, we just didn't say, oh, no rent control, and that's it. We went above and beyond and created a rent relief program for those that need assistance. And, and thank God that, that it worked out. It worked out, because now we've had this program and staff was able to do an amazing job of, you know, it's, first, in the beginning, it was a trial and error. But after a while, you know, now we have other cities that are looking, asking them for advice. And I also, I also served on the Cities Association of Santa Clara County, and I shared what we were doing. And so now other cities are modeling our program. So I'm really thankful that they had. So I was just wondering if you knew of other cities that have this type of program. And I'm hoping that it will continue for a very long time, so.
Yes, and I did share the same sentiment with Sharon and Sarah, because really, the IQ Support Program is meant to be a short-term support, financial assistance for households, so that they can, you know, feel safe and secure as they isolate at home and not have to worry about making rent or paying bills. So by, by the City of Milpitas having this rent relief program, so that we can work with the Housing Department to refer Milpitas residents to apply for additional assistance, I think that is wonderful.
Yeah, thank you. And we're going to be doing more, you know, with the, with the, with the help of our staff and city manager, we'll be doing a lot more great things for our residents in Milpitas. So, thank you, thank you for sharing your information.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
Chair, did you want to check for any public comment?
Yeah, any public comments, Robert?
There are two remaining public comments for the last item. So there are no public comments for this item.
Okay. Oh, but before you go on to the public comments for the next item, is there any reason why my picture doesn't show up? I tried doing the other way, but you see how it just kind of goes like that? I don't know why it's doing that. Anyway, I don't have nothing on my screen, so maybe I can ask IT. So anyway, but aside from that, aside from that, so it's not that I'm, I'm not showing you, I don't want to show you people my face, because it's always good to talk to a human face there, you know, but since, so anyway, I'm having technical problems with my laptop. So, so you want to, so are we ready for the public comment? Or should we, is, is, should we wait till after the last, the next, the last item?
We should go ahead and do the comment on this item now.
Okay. All right. Of the comments. Go ahead, Robert. Thanks, Steve.
There are two public comments. One is from Allison McDonald. It says, "In addition to the revenue sharing agreement with the county that would provide proper outreach to the unhoused population in Milpitas, we need to provide basic services that other cities provide, hygiene, medical, nutrition, Wi-Fi, et cetera. Most of all, they need shelter from the elements, a place to call home. Our residents deserve to be treated with dignity. I urge you to pursue funding to provide for the basic needs of those who unfortunately cannot, for one reason or another, provide for themselves. And please consider how to stem the flood of evictions that will begin when the moratorium ends. Both renters and small landlords will need your help. Otherwise, our homeless and unhoused population will soar." And the second public comment for this item is from Ervish Metta. "As to city council members and committee members, I would like to refer to council members Carmen Montano's and Bob Nunes' comment on person helping with homeless housing. The job requisition part of city to partner with county and faith-based and community-based organization to provide differential services to homeless through nonprofit partnership. This job position would be important for City of Milpitas, as it would be incorporating a lot of nonprofit work required to represent the city, county, state, and federal level. Request to consider the comment as part of relief program for homeless." And those are the
All right. Thank you, Robert. The agenda, can you put that up, so I could see what our next? Do we have one more item, right? Or is that it?
Yeah, yeah. No, no, that's the discuss homeless relief options. And so I wanted to speak to that if I could.
Yes, sure.
So, thank you. So during the month of, I can't remember now, was it August that we had off? July?
July.
July. July. It just seems so long ago now. So we had committees, I had committees meeting, we had committees meeting. And I just wanted to bring back some of the information that was there, that we came up with. And actually, I've heard a lot of them just already today. So from those, we had a housing relief program to broaden the range of applicants. And at some point, Sharon, we need to talk about the, why the school district definition for homelessness, houselessness. And the counties are not the same of what that really means to us. Also looking at giving a broader, broader range of benefits when we talk about housing relief so that it can be applied to not only rent relief, but also maybe some other kinds of relief such as, I apologize for my dog who has been waiting upstairs a long time to go outside. Those kinds of things like for utilities and things of that sort. Also to look at those areas such as validation of Section 8 vouchers for rent relief and payment of some of the things that actually allow persons to get into their rental units that don't come prior to them getting monies from the, the Section 8 vouchers because they come after the fact. Some of the things they have also that it came up with was, and we heard this just the other day, working with faith-based organizations and looking at the use of parking lots and safe park programs. And I just read about that in a couple of cities where they talked about providing both the parking lots and the places to be able to wash your clothes and restroom facilities. And that's something to look at. The hotel motel conversion, hotel motel conversions, which we just talked about, extended stay. On the list was about a social services officer. And I think that's position Councilmember Montano you just talked about. And really what the, that position would be doing with regard to the houseless. And I think we do need to clear that up so we're all on the same page. Looking at not only those persons that are houseless, but seniors in specific. Because sometimes they are left in, in homes that they can't get out and go do their normal things, especially during COVID. And there was something that came up with regard to looking at, when one says houseless, what does that really mean? Just because someone lives in a car or some kind of vehicle, does that mean we look at that as a place of residence for them because they see it that way? Or what do we do with regard to trying to provide them safety while they're living in that vehicle? So I'm going to put this together so, and send it out to everybody. But those are some of the, of the issues that came up that we should consider as we move forward with the, the Housing Subcommittee and use during these times. Because we have not yet come out from the pandemic. And I think the times are just going to get more difficult. I want to say at the end, because I know our time is short, all of this information in our meeting went long, I think, because we didn't have meetings for quite some time. And we need to get the, so that they are a little more regular so that they don't go for two hours and 40 minutes. So with that, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, I think there was, we will, there was some other, and I think you already know why we didn't have, there was some personnel issues, but
Sure, sure.
We don't want to, we want to make sure that people are have, have, that people are safe.
And I agree.
So that's why we didn't meet for a while, but everything is okay. So we're going to move on forward. So is that the last item? Yes, it sure is. And anything else, last comments before we close this meeting? Okay?
Chair, I just have one comment. I just wanted to be sure, under public comment, maybe I can check with staff. I understood we did receive one comment, was that read? That wasn't read, this might be good time to grab that comment and read it, just so we didn't leave someone behind.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Just, just checking with staff, did we have that comment?
So we had, we had a comment that came in that was duplicate for the, for the item. So you can only have one comment per item and this person put in a second comment for that item.
Okay, okay, very good. Just wanted to check to be sure we covered all the bases, thank you.
That's good, that's good. I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're on top of that. All right, everyone, everyone stay safe and thank you for a very well-run meeting and very productive meeting. And we shall see you soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye, stay safe everyone, bye. Media journey.